I keep going past your house at the moment.
Stalking.
Are you wondering speeding by?
No, you can't even get up because that hedge, you can't see around it, it's terrible.
Don't be tempted for contact. All right, let's, while we've got, talking about speeding on, let's speed on to a good evening, councillors, good evening members of the public, welcome to this town council, full meeting, Oakham Town Council, Wednesday the 13th of February 2019, it is now 6:30pm, their council's now in session. So item one is apologies, we've had apologies from councillors, Denia and Lucas, I'll take it on lot, so apologies, proposal to accept, proposed by councillor Skipworth, seconded by councillor Bottomley, all those in favour, show hands please. That's going to be nine, isn't it? And then extension against one, that's, yeah, we didn't. Members are asked to declare, declarations of interest is item two, members are asked to declare if they might any disclose all pecuniary interests and any other interest they may have in respect to item the agenda. So we've got some, so who've we got? Zoe, Joy and Daniel.
Non pecuniary.
Item?
Item sixteen.
Right, so Dave, Daniel is...
He's a rep.
Yeah, so he, that's, so you can, you take vote in discussion if you so wish and vote, yeah?
So councillor, you know.
Representative of another volume to task and finish group, I will take part in the statement of the not vote.
Which number really is sent for?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
So are you on the residents group or task and finish group?
She's not on either. She's just...
I'm supportive for Facebook.
On which group?
On Tuscan Finish.
Right, okay, you'll be the same as Daniel then.
So I declare for that as well.
And you can take part in the vote and discussion.
And I'm also declaring for the exempt item as well.
Which one?
Non pecuniary, number nineteen.
The dog's all morning.
Here's one.
Slapping.
Slapping.
No, we've got, has that just been...
Oh, that's just the minutes, yeah, that's the minutes.
I don't need to score, okay?
We're at council office with this actually.
Twenty, both of them.
No vote, no discussion?
Discussing, I can back it, yeah.
Just checking.
Just a point of order, I guess what it is, I don't know, on the number sixteen, task and finish report, the clerk has mentioned voting and discussion, but the agenda consists to receive a note to the report, there's nothing on the agenda to say that we're going to discuss it tonight or vote on anything.
Yep, that makes it a lot easier when we get to the report, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So we could be all about RCC play a clock. Are we at slow?
What are we doing now?
Nothing. Highways are there waiting for you. Hey, there's no others is there? So we've gone on to item three, I think we did, we've got sixteen. Obviously, on, good evening, on the minutes, you'll be, councillor Neil, you'll be abstaining if you were to pay. So anybody got any comments or changes? So I'm looking for a proposal for the minutes, councillor Watworth, seconded by councillor Bottomley, all those in favour? So that's going to be nine and one extension. We've got, any items four is chairmen's and members' reports, receiving reports from the chairman's, chairman and members, I haven't got one, but you've got one, haven't you? Councillor Watworth.
Hundred and eight.
Okay, forget that then. No other reports is there? No, because yours is covered on your bit when you do your thing. But he's got, he's got his own section tonight. Be prepared. Five, any councillors' questions? None? So item six is deputation by the public, good evening to the public again. So the public are invited to speak if they so wish for a maximum of three minutes on any item on the agenda. So sir, would you like to speak on the... If it's more comfortable for you, you can remain seated if it's easy, yes, you can.
I'm Gail Robertson and I'm representing the Bowls Club. And I wanted just to put a little bit more flesh on the, on the bones of your item, agenda item number twenty, which relates to our request for a lease extension. The Bowls Club dates from 1910, I believe most of this time on the same site. And our first formal lease with your council, I believe, was in 2007. This, this lease runs until March 2027. In 2015, we undertook some major improvements at the Bowls Club, most of these were safety-related. And we had to replace the sides and the pavement all the way around the green, we widened it and we made some changes particularly in relation to access for disabled bowlers. This cost us around about £20,000 and was funded both by members and a grant from Rutland County Council. And this made us really one of the top clubs in Leicestershire. We knew at that time we'd need to make improvements to the bowling green itself. We've had drainage problems over the years and these cause undulations in the green. And these problems were brought into sharp focus last year in the dry summer. We had last year been asked to host a county match, but due to complaints by various bowlers who were members of the county committee and who played during the season, the fixture was cancelled by Leicestershire Bowls. So we now need to bring forward our plans and spend some money on the green. We've not looked at this in detail, but our initial advice is that we'll need to replace the drainage and then undertake laser levelling. Now, I don't know what all that's about really, but it won't be cheap and this could run into several thousand pounds. You may wonder why I'm here to talk about lease renewal in 2019 when it runs to 2027. But it's already been quite clear to us when we've been talking to members about funding this and talking about funding sources, that it's not going to be possible to get funding as we don't have security of tenure for more than ten years. It's currently eight and by the time we get on with these repairs, it could be about seven. So in short, we're requesting a further, either a lease extension or another twenty-year lease so that we can actually undertake the subjective, which is from our point of view, becoming quite a... Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, perfect. Would you like to address councillor on any items on the agenda?
I can do.
But you don't have to, if you have something you wanted to mention on the agenda.
Well, I'm here representing the Red Box Project.
All right, yes, yeah, that's on here, yes, yes, if you've got, yes, if you've got some disinformation. If you're happy to talk about it, feel free.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, all I'm really going to do is just give you a little bit of an update, I know that some information's been given to you already regarding what the project is about. Really, it's just a matter of letting you know that we now have boxes in every primary school in Oakham and we have boxes in all of the high schools in Rutland. And I don't know if everybody knows what the Red Box Project is, you do? Oh, fantastic.
We had a, we had a lot of brief.
Brilliant. So yeah, my next goal is to get red boxes into all the primary schools, colleges and any extracurricular activities, educational activities, brand guides, that sort of thing within Rutland. Obviously, I am the person running it. And it is a large area when you look at it being one person. So I just want you to let me know what my next goals are.
Brilliant, yeah? Right, now, it's been, we've got the clerk's report which has been distributed, so you've all got it on your table, yeah? So issues on that, then, probably in the third, I guess. So that's that. Now, the point is, because the gentleman's here specifically about the Bowls Club, and the Bowls Club's quite a far way down the agenda, I was going to suggest or propose from the chair that we bring item twenty forward and discuss that next. So if that was proposed, that's seconded by councillor, oh, yes, and also that you feel that because we won't be discussing the details of the lease and just to extend it, because that, that it probably wouldn't need to be exempt as well, all right? So proposed by councillor Lowry, seconded by councillor Bond. So all those in favour that are bringing it forward? That's, yes, no, you don't need more than that, that's unanimous. And so if everybody's happy that it's not exempt, the paper's in front of us, yeah? Mr Robertson, Robert, he's given a brief, we've seen it here, it makes perfectly good sense. But is there any questions for myself, or have you come to me then?
And I must say, I'm totally in favor of this, it's hard to say now, but how long will it take them to do this work? It sounds like an enormous task, so will it, will them basically out of use at some point retire or not?
I don't know, so I imagine it'll be out of use for a time they do the work, I will ask, would you know, sir, how long your work will take?
Well, we obviously bowl during the summer, that's usually five, it's over five months. Hopefully, if we get your permission for extending the lease, we will undertake the work at the end of this season, so the beginning of September and be complete by March.
All right, so they do it in a couple of downtime, so councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the Bowls Club, but obviously we come to what I think could be a problem with extending the lease on knowing that in the past it's not been let up what the Secretary of State requires us to do at commercial value. So I would like, you know, to agree in principle that we can extend the lease, but to ensure that we get proper legal advice on how we can extend it and whether we can continue to be taking what is really a peppercorn rent.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, we, we, we know it's only a few hundred pounds a year and that's not commercial value for the property, but I don't want to put a future council in the same problem that we've had, because every time we bring it up as a budget, they say we can't do anything because it's in the lease from 2007. So that's all I just want to say on that.
That's what I put it, does anybody else have any comments? Because councillor Skipworth wanted to come back and all, so anybody else, anybody else to say? Councillor Skipworth?
I know that we shouldn't have mentioned certain documents, but we in Oakham have an aging population, which I think is generally known, but we've also got younger people. And I feel quite strongly that this is actually a community thing as well, so when you start mentioning putting these things up, you're not thinking about the people who live in our town that we're representing, that I think, not that I'm a member, but I've been, but from what I've heard, what I've read in the paper, it's a real service to the community. And I just think that this should be taken into account when and if we're looking at putting the rent up.
Okay, all right, brilliant, okay, thank you for that, I'll just clarify, I'm not allowed to discuss the figures of the rent because it's not strictly what we're speaking about, here we're talking about extending the lease. I've not got a problem with the clerk reviewing what it is and double checking that we're actually charging the correct rent as per what councillor Brooks and Louie do there, but the rent is set annually and we do go by the national guidelines, which is the RPIs. But so, not a problem with incorporating what councillor Brooks has said, but so what we're looking for from anybody that wants to make a proposal, that we agree here to extend the lease. So who's proposing that, councillor?
If it's how you said it.
Yes, yeah, we agreed to extend the lease to, I would say twenty years would be better and the clerk is...
But proper legal advice is still...
Yeah, the clerk is double checks that what, everything is in order on the lease, yeah? So that's proposed by councillor Brooks, seconded by councillor Watworth, all those in favour? That's unanimous then. So again, that's, 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 that's okay then, what the council will do with that.
And why I'd like to say thank you.
Oh, no, thank you for taking the time to come out.
But don't be scared by the commercial rate, because it's not that...
Then, so should we also, councillor Romney suggested that maybe we should bring item twelve forward as well now, which is the Red Box Project, to make a decision there, seeing as that the member of the public is taking the time to come in so they don't have to, if they choose not to, they don't have to stay hold, right then? So proposed by councillor Romney, the Red Box Project is brought forward, seconded by councillor Brooks, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well. So item twelve then, Red Box Project, to receive reports, to make any decisions as I'll open the circle, I don't know if you want to play your night on this as well, councillor Neil, to report.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, you've all had the brief, so all read through it, and the gentleman's here to update you, so I don't know that there's much more I can add except to say that it is a project that has been identified nationally and that is growing nationally, so it's really making a difference, not only for the country, but obviously through the county and Oakham specifically. And Gemma working solidly on this as a volunteer to help the support of an organisation such as Oakham Town Council, it would be very beneficial.
Councillor Skipworth?
I'm 100% think this is a brilliant idea, the only thing that I do want to say is that for many, many, many years, it has been the duty of schools, junior and senior schools, to teach about menstruation, so if the parents or the mother or whoever they're living with doesn't tell them, the school should be giving them plenty of education beforehand, and that's the only thing that I do find that I don't like, because it goes on. And so unless the parents withdraw them, which I don't think they're allowed to, then that's not altogether right.
I think they are, up to a certain age, they are allowed to withdraw them.
Well, it wasn't allowed, so they must have changed it.
Okay, then councillor Brooks?
I don't want to be sounding an ogre, but I don't think you should be voting on this on the basis that it's only been put in the budget for the next council. So in the meantime, I went out and I discussed this with the Rutland Lions, who can give donations for small projects like this, and this before the meeting this evening, I spoke to Zoe quickly, the Rutland Lions have agreed to fund this project. The other thing is as well, as a council, we can't commit any future council to an annual donation, if it was to be agreed by council this evening that they would spend next year's budget, then that would be just for that year, you can't say that it can be an ongoing thing. So I'm putting that to council, that that is a genuine offer from the Rutland Lions, that they will pay what is asked here tonight, and it solves a lot of problems, I think.
Where we have a problem, councillor Clough?
I see problems.
I'm very much in support of this project, I think it's a good project and needed, especially in these, these economic times. I am happy that our name should be associated as being supporters of this project and I agree with the decisions, one and two certainly, but three, I agree with Martin that we cannot actually commit to resolving to support it annually.
Do it for one year.
We could do it for one year and we can say, we would like, we invite you cordially to apply annually for a grant, if that's what you want to do, but I don't think our grants policy would allow us to say we will do it in perpetuity.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean to say we're saying never again.
May I just say, whilst we're on that subject, we have recently started a legal campaign towards the government, because at present Scotland and their government are providing period products for free to all educational environments, so we're now, we join closely with the non-education for free periods, so actually we're hoping that eventually the Red Box Project won't actually be needed, so, yes.
Right, okay, right, any other councillors got any comments you want to make? Right, so councillor Clough, if you want to make that... Well, so there was a potential proposal there from councillor Clough that we go with one, two and three, but with that it's done as a one-off and it's not in perpetuity.
Yes, but they're invited to...
And they can reapply each year, because we will have a grants policy in place by then, and I thank councillor Brooks for bringing the comment from the Lions where we extend courtesy to Lions, unfortunately, they're not inherently person to do that. And I agree that this is something which I think the local council can do, so. So proposal from councillor Clough, one, two and three, with the amendment that it's not annual, seconded by councillor Skipworth, all those in favour, show hands please. That's nine, all those against one? No, against, no, against, that's been prehated, so would...
Don't bring us trouble, our policy says that we can't support individuals that we're going to adopt tonight.
But thanks, that's it, thank you very much. So you can remain for the rest of the meeting if you want, or if you want you to now...
Well, if you have three children at home, right, boy. If you're eight years three, Zoe, is that okay?
Yeah. Where's the money coming from?
It'll be after, you won't get it until after eight.
No, that's next year, probably.
Yeah, but just say you won't get it until after eight.
But then we shouldn't be making decisions that the next council might not have agreed on.
Why's that?
Yeah, I swear to God before.
We shouldn't.
Why's that, councillor Brooks?
We just shouldn't go that far ahead.
What is the, what is the legal reason we can't make a decision, councillor?
Why, you give me the legal reason we can.
Well, I think you're referring to Perler, councillor Brooks, and we're not in Perler. And even if we were in Perler, this is not a significant decision.
But we haven't made...
So move on.
But we haven't made it clear in a minute that it's coming out of next year's budget, because that'd be...
Right, so moving on then, we're now going on to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, working groups. So item eight is received, calls of working groups or representatives working with external bodies, so the first one here is St George Barracks, and I believe councillor Bottomley's got an initial verbal report, which is then going to be backed up with an email document.
Excuse me for leaving my phone, but the email system has gone down, so we couldn't print it, okay? Okay, and right then, obviously, we all know the project going on, we've all currently got the stats on it, all right, what I try to narrow it down to now is what we know, what we think we know and what conjecture areas are. So to sell it off with, and nobody can worry about this, approximately 55,000 houses we've built spread between all of the MOD sites that are currently being sold off.
Fifty, something, fifty?
Fifty-five thousand throughout the...
You would be getting this email through to you, so don't worry about making notes. Keep going, please, you've already got three, five minutes.
I get it. All right, of those 55,000 houses, 39,000 acres have been accounted for according to the Better Defences May Report, okay, that leaves 15,200 remaining, okay? Many of the villages in the immediate vicinity of St George Barracks are opposed to the development, currently 2,215 houses with the exclusion so far of the August semester. And many residents of Rutland, mainly from the surrounding villages, are opposed to the HIF bid. The M O D has stated that the development will go ahead regardless of the success of the HIF bid. Once the total amount of houses has been announced, approximately a third of the total must be affordable housing, although we don't know at the moment what its class is of worth. The M O D is obligated to develop the site in line with national housing and treasury target. The success of the HIF bid will grant RCC £30 million to improve infrastructure due to the development, okay, that's what we know at this moment in time as fact. Move down to conjecture. Okay, many residents of the villages local to the proposed development vehemently believe the scale of development is too large and would destroy what makes Rutland unique. The M O D states that to make the development viable, they need to build a minimum of 2,215 houses on the site. I class this currently as speculation as there has been no effort by the M O D to provide a breakdown of the costing for making the site ready for development, so that's ground pollution, removal of explosives or demolition, et cetera. If the HIF bid is successful, potentially 50% of the available funding is to be spent on making good the site before redevelopment can proceed, and goes against the responsibility of the owner to incur those costs. Nothing legally that we're aware of, but it's still one of those things which we're worried about. If the project gets a go-ahead, there can be no other building work across the county due to the full allotment being incorporated into the St George's Barrack development. That's what people are trying to push across at the moment from what they're against, but from what I can gather, that isn't true.
Isn't it?
Isn't, it's not. Given the potential figure of £15 million, half of the HIF grant, going on the keen of the St George's Barracks, the remaining £15 million is not enough to provide the level of infrastructure required for a development of this size, including that would be larger reinforcement of the roads around Witschew Warren, improved transportings to A1 and an alleged 30k V A line in Trent from Empingham to St George's Barracks provided out. A development of 350 to 500 houses can be absorbed by the existing infrastructure, schools, doctor's shops, et cetera. Have I lost my stuff now? Yeah? Now, approval of the HIF bid means RCC automatically approve the currently proposed figures, that's also incorrect, they can walk away any time providing, if they don't like the stipulation to come with the actual HIF bid itself, they can still turn it out. The mineral city has not yet been undertaken for the future quarry elements of the development, so a cost extraction analysis is currently available. So there's been nothing put forward by D I O or the M O D to tell us what sort of game they're going to get on the quality side of it. There are many factors that cannot be explained at this juncture, given the infancy of the project, and this council will be made aware of any person in support of significant developments as a one-nail eyes. There's more to this report, but given the timeframe, obviously, and the technical issues, you will be given a copy.
We've emailed it out hopefully tomorrow, once the camera comes up then. Phil wants it from Rock Time, we're going to carry on, can do it all?
I think, I think, I think, I think that's how much you can absorb, I think, but does anybody want to hear any more? How much more we got, how much more brief your brief have you got? Twenty minutes, what? I think another two minutes will probably do it, it's up to you guys.
Click on. Don't pass that.
Right then, okay then, we'll go on to St George's Barracks video. Right, this is, it was requested by members of the advisory group, provide a census scale to the devil, which may have a lack of the concept as a whole. What seems to be tentatively agreed by both the for and against councillors is that the roads which would be used to be travellers to the site would need to be reinforced in some areas, though neither side could agree with which at this stage. I raised the point that the quarry should go ahead, should the quarry go ahead, none of the HIF should be used to build reinforcer routes for the heavy vehicles. I was informed that should the mineral extraction prove a viable option, then the host committee in question would put the bill for that. Those in favour of the proposed scale of development believe this will be a gold opportunity for Rutland for the next 20 years and would bring much-needed footwork to businesses within the local economy. In conjunction with this is the establishment of a business enterprise bar to sustain the significant population increase. The initial area of 12 acres is now deemed insufficient for the proposed one job per household aspect, which is a key component of the vision and is under further examination. Those against proposed scale of development believe that this would destroy what makes Rutland a great land, although no one seems to be able to quantify this claim or whatever it means. The point has been raised that with this development, our housing requirements... Right, okay then, last bit, Woolfox. On your handout with the Howard's email, there is a link attached for you to examine that, okay, but Woolfox is an RAF camp that lies just south of Breecombe, as most of you're aware, with easier access to A1, despite a fate of investment in this location by residents around St George's Barracks, little is known on the viability of Woolfox as alternative location for this development.
Disused, I think.
It's been handed back. So it's not a dispute.
What's it, what's it, an air force on our...
They wanted it for a wind farm, but people didn't want it.
If, even if this location is able to support the scope of the plan, the military do not own that land anymore, as it was handed back to the original owners. Woolfox is a new contender so far as we know, yet given its infancy compared to the two years already invested to get St George's Barracks past the plan to its current level, I envisage at least another six to 12 months before a viability study is undertaken or completed. That would do for now.
Yeah, brilliant, well, obviously that would be emailed round, there's a lot to read for those that want to get even more detail. Ziegman pictures here.
Are we allowed to take comments? Or question?
Oh, please, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I went, Mr Chairman, I can't give it Mr, Mr Chairman, I went to the meeting over at the county council about St George's Barracks, as many people did, and the lady whose name fails me, perhaps that's on purpose, I don't know, but the lady that was in charge of all this said that it was guaranteed that they had got people that wanted to open places for people to work and they could guarantee all these jobs, absolutely guarantee them, although that was questioned by many of the people that were there, so there's no worry about the jobs, because they're going to be there, we're being promised by the person who works for the county council, just wanted to play that out.
Is that, is that a councillor?
No, no, not a councillor, that is...
You want me to go back to... No, no, I think everybody should, I think you should read the report, because there might be something in there that... Right, so we've got, we've got some... Uh, right, so we've got, um, we've got some big, big, big... This is reported for us, isn't it?
It's a what?
It's just a form.
It's just basically, somebody had asked me to give you a breakdown of what we'd asked for in the budget, so I've put that forward for you. Um, and the other things are what we discussed in the meeting. Um, we do still have some money in the budget, and that is why at the bottom I have asked if we can propose the I S N reorders leaflets and cups, the cups that you've got there, out of this year's budget that we have left.
Happy with that? Oh, you've got, he's got the plastic one.
Can I have a question? Please. Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, we've already spoken about this, but I just want to get it on record that I, I do agree with you, working with Caroline, but we do need to make sure that it's on a correct footing with a lease or a contract agreement. Um, just, just so we, just so we know.
Yeah.
That's all I want to say. Uh, councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I have a question on the road closure cost. It seems to have gone up considerably high again, and I wondered if this could be discussed with Brooklyn County Council of why it actually costs a thousand pounds now, and considering the event that goes on on Boxing Day, it doesn't actually pay anything.
We, we have spoken to Brooklyn County Council.
It's a couple of...
But it was seven hundred and something pounds this year. And now they're saying a thousand.
Well, I've got, we've got no issue, we're going back and asking him if it might have gone up, because it's a moving year. Anyway, councillor Bonley. Oh, you've got it, okay. Um, so we don't need to go on this, it's just advisors on what, so we've been agreed on, isn't it? I believe the leaflets and the cups have been ordered.
They're done, yeah.
Yeah. But can I take, are those sort of these?
They're the, they're the old ones, but we have got new ones.
Can I thank, can I thank everyone for what they've done for us?
Yes, no, I think exactly, I think that councillor Bosworth and the senior did brilliant, they did fantastic last year. Group on that group, yeah.
Anne, Paul, Daniel. Sammy.
You'll have to be going anyway. Probably minute.
Can you minute the...
We'll speak to councillor...
The Christmas thing.
Obviously, we'll...
People, people do it very... Yes, can I propose it yours, I say that Sam is brilliant, a person who...
Will you stop there? Perhaps I'll not do it next year.
That's horrible.
No, can I have two doors now? Right, let's, right, you send some flowers and choppers.
Yeah!
The boots, councillor.
Have your budget, have your budget.
Okay, there's no other reports, um, at the moment. The, the neighbourhood plan people on the back of that meeting, which I don't know if it's all the email that came around, Chris Park was very, um, the team were pretty upbeat, actually, they thought it was pretty, yeah. Right.
The point, they're going to arrange a preliminary meeting with the planning department to try and iron out some of the problems before we present it as an article to the examiner. And they're going to...
Can we break the news of that?
If we're contacted by Brooklyn County Council, can you basically share that?
Yeah, and they shared out some of the work.
Yeah, they're putting all those comments over, they've passed over there, they're far on board and, um...
But reference that, can I get my, um, book, my written everything off, do I have to write it on that? Point up. Really, paper flat?
Oh, it's Christmas, got it out, plus...
I suppose, yeah, obviously, just so I can sort of keep everything in mind. Oh, really?
I've got one of them.
Yeah. Right. Uh, moving on to item nine, isn't it, to tell all the councils. Any kind of observations, councillor Brooks?
Have they been reconciled?
Have they been reconciled by, what, the finance working group?
Yeah.
Have they been reconciled?
Um, no, but you and David have.
Oh, we did, yeah, that's right, councillor Romney and myself, we went through the payments, direct debits, and the invoices, didn't we? We did, so that's right, we went through them on... Can I, can I, just before, before you come off that subject, can I just, just come back and remember, by council, actually, it doesn't need to be a member of the, the, the working, the finance group. Bank Regulation Two, Two Point Two, actually only states it needs to be a member of the council elected annually. Brilliant, brilliant. I did look at that, but... Councillor Healy, sir.
Thank you. Can't see it here, but some months ago, we agreed to open a account for the Melton Building Society to give us a better rate of interest, a local service, and reduce the risk. Well...
Um, we had, um, a member on for a signature, and thought that he resigned. Um, and it was resolved that councillors skipped with, um, but... I've been signing with this, yeah, for the, no, for the Melton, but, but then you decided that you didn't want to do it either.
So we haven't any...
So, but it's, it's on, it is actually on the board in there, it's going to go on after the sixth month, which we're up to. I was going to bring it back in for, um, Marches.
It may be worth leaving till May.
It's, I mean, I've, yours still I pictured, so David, um, we need one more, but the forms are all filled out ready. It's just, it is on the, it is on the...
This is where you asked me about that, it's nice that I would, but I did say maybe it's better way to make, because no-one knows who's going to be doing that. No point in signing now, and then in three months, the clerk has to go and go and get another three signatures. Yeah? Um, I mean, that's the way I look at it anyway, because also then you can't even get the money out that you put in there. Over by the... But anyway, so to answer councillor Healy's question then, it's delayed due to, um, signatures, basically. And that's only six months' call has prevented us from bringing it back.
I said that would happen.
Excuse me, can I just, I think it's brilliant to wait until the new people, because nobody knows who'll get elected, if lots of people put up, they don't know.
So, any other comments on the accounts, or is it somebody to propose?
Can I just ask for clarification that you're willing to sign that you reconciled them?
You can ask that.
Because you said, well, you have done it, but it was sort of a bit...
Did you need to sign to say...
Yeah, we have to sign the book.
Yeah.
Because then I agree with it, if it has been officially reconciled, that's all I think.
We can do that, we can sign the book, yeah, we can, sign the book every two, can't we? Um, a bit paper. Right, looking for a proposal to accept the accounts, all these extra jobs, by councillor Neil last of all first, second by councillor Brooks, all those in favour, each hands down. That's unanimous. Uh, item nine is, uh, ten, this we got, item ten, authorisation to pay invoice over five thousand pounds. This is open plan, invoice number one eight nine, and this, the council will agree to do whatever they're going to do.
Um, I would like more information on this before I consider signing away the money. I would like to know, is this a final account for this company? What they've done for the money, and what, what has been said to them about the condition of the report they produced? Because if I'm buying a piece of furniture and it's scratched all there, but it has missing, I wouldn't buy it. And as far as I'm concerned, the condition of the, the report they produced was not fit for purpose. And to pay a full amount of money to a company that hasn't done the job it was requested to do, I think is irresponsible and it's not our money. And I think we should be asking further questions about, you know, how, how, you know, what are we paying for? What services are included in this fee, which is information we don't have? How much of this fee was produced in the report? And are we satisfied that we want to pay that amount of money for a report that was so standard?
Do we know if this is final invoice?
That's final away, yes.
And...
And all those two, there's the one for the additional, which cancelled the one and a half days,
Yeah.
which I haven't put on here, because obviously it's, it's under five thousand. And then this is the, the one that I believe is final.
I thought there was a request put in by councillors to see the breakdown of the costs.
Which, well, which...
So, right, okay, so there's been, so there's been a breakdown of the costs handed out?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't actually tell you what they do for the money, all it is is how much they've been paid. In fact, it doesn't even say which ones are open plan, it just simply says consultancy.
Well, because the open plan are involved...
But we've had other consultants presumably, but it's so...
Right, then we're going to stop there, because this is not a, um... This was councillor Brooks, I'd say.
I think there's a confusion on what information was required. Um, when my partner died, we had a solicitor who did a lot of work, and it was quite expensive. And I went to that solicitor and said, could you provide a breakdown of an invoice? So we can just see that everything was okay, and I think in this circumstance, we're even asked to pay out a lot of money. We're told there's an additional day or two days, which have been paid under the clerk's...
Well, the council agreed to that.
Which we don't, that's not a problem, but I, I would like to know, just see the invoices, to see what we're actually paying for, because I do echo what Joy has said, and I think we have a right to say if we're not happy with something, that we don't pay it. And I'm also concerned that the neighbourhood plan and our opposition, the working group, that what future costs, because they've gone away, there are a lot of informations from us, and there's going to be some big changes, and I think there's going to be suddenly more money required, they're not going to do the work for free. So I won't be voting on that, because my question wasn't answered, it was slightly misunderstood, and we were just shown a breakdown of expenditure, which most of us have been given over the time. Although I wasn't, we were told that all expenditure was approved, I was slightly shocked to see seven hundred or pounds for travelling expenses and things. I don't ever remember that coming to council. Um, and that just seemed to happen at the last moment, it was never claimed over the other years. And, but anyway, we're not discussing that, but I've just brought that up for the concerns, that we're not really clear what we're paying for.
I'm just, I'm going to bring in councillor Buxton first, or next?
Yeah, um, basically, I mean, Joy was aimed at fire, at open fire. I must say, I haven't been with the group long, but viewing it, there's so much discussion. Quite a lot of the text was contributed by the people, not by open plan, on their own, so, uh, of course, I must be very confused at times, I think that's what we decided, um. So I agree, it's a lot of money, so I don't know what we're going to have.
Okay, um, councillor Brooks has already spoken once, before you, before I invite you back, councillor Clough, I want to hear all the members first, if that's all right, so...
I, I was very shocked, actually, I've got to agree with councillor, um, Brooks today, because I was shocked, it wasn't just the one payment for these travelling things, it was several. And it made me think, they've all gone in different cars, they've all done all this, and it was absolutely ridiculous. Where have they been going to, to, to bring up all of this money for travelling? I was shocked, and if that's happening for one aspect, is it happening for others as well? Who?
Councillor Clough, you want to come back on the point, I think?
It was about, about the quality of the work. Um, a report produced by a professional company should at least have arrived proofed.
You said, you have mentioned this once already in your earlier comments.
But also in reading the comments, taking on councillor Buxton's comments, that, that some of the text was provided by the, um,
Report?
Emerson Steering Group. Um, it was quite obvious reading it, which elements would be produced by open plan, because the consultant that was writing our report was Italian. And you could see the, you could see the, um, the use of English, the quality of the use of English. And I, I find it reprehensible that a company should be asked, should be producing a, a report in English language that actually isn't written in good English. Especially when we paid so much for it.
Uh, I'm assuming that once this five thousand is paid, there's still going to be...
No, nine, nine thousand one hundred and sixty-six.
Yeah, sorry, altogether. Uh, once this is done, obviously, the report's going to go back and get fixed anyway.
It's been, it's been, well, it's not been fixed, it's been, it's been updated, I wouldn't, there's a perception that it's broken. Right, out, here we go.
I'm, I'm still going to see the word fixed, but what we say is, if they are prepared to do the work, which they're under contact to anyway, even if it was a substandard, um, substandard product, then the money that they're getting paid is going to be there regardless. So if they're going to repair it, if they're going to update and rewrite it, then that case of no hard light fatal, but the work is going to get done, so we should act in good faith.
Uh, I just want to, so just before I read any of this out, is this in the public domain? No, I would have thought so. Is it acceptable, this invoice is subject to being in public domain, isn't it?
No, maybe, well, it gets paid at the public domain, so I don't see that, I don't see that, I see that it's not, no.
I'm just concerned with the fact that we're, we're recording this meeting at the moment. Um, right, one thing the clerk has said to me, that a lot of the stuff that's on here has already been resolved by this council to, to pay in previous meetings, and nobody before this meeting has asked to see proof of that. Um, right, okay, let's have a look, let's see what we got. Um, is everybody happy that I read this out?
Do you read slowly though, because I bet you're already done with it?
Yes. Right. Would it be easier to do a copy for everybody to read? You'll take this one and the third copy, rather than me read it, me, I'll read it out, let you...
Well, that's what I asked for in my request.
This is actually invoice that relates to this, this item here, not, not the overall, the whole project.
You can read it like that.
Swag, there isn't more, do, do, do.
Could I have a quick point?
Of course, can, yes, yes.
Um, the, um, open plan company and our steering group members did lean quite heavily on plans for other, other councils, you know, other towns. So they, yeah, they, they sort of transposed it slightly, um...
They thought they were doing this with the job that I already raised, it'd be no problem. So, um, yeah.
Extrapolating from appropriate sources.
So obviously bearing in mind, there doesn't get the, I mean, regardless of, I know comments have been made about what the perception of the standard of work is, or the facts of what the standard of work is, but the fact remains that the work has been undertaken, the hours have been completed, and the council has resolved to do this, so you need to keep mindful of that, because there has to be a very strong reason for refusal to pay the invoice, and there's subsequent consequences of it.
That's right.
I would like to...
Well, I mean, have you ever, has any people here have actually participated in a neighbourhood plan before?
Is that what we did?
Just curious about that, because...
Was that the one that we were on?
Yeah.
One of the things that Chris Clark did was that he actually brought a neighbourhood plan, which he had from, yeah, but he had Langham's neighbourhood plan, and he was comparing the one that, and this was before our comments were put, he was comparing Langham's neighbourhood plan with the one that the open plan drew up, so he was looking at how they were doing. So...
Was it the same here with it?
No, I don't believe it was, that's...
The, the headings are correct, but it's the content.
That's true.
It's probably not made in...
Good.
Yes.
There's one and a half days that isn't on here, but that was already agreed at last council about two months ago, but I, I haven't brought that invoice in, but that's for one and a half days.
Does quantity of the price of days? Sorry, I couldn't hear what you said, Joy.
Does quantity mean days? What's quantity in this, in this context?
The hours.
No, it's days, or, uh, yes, one and a half days, it was, yes, days.
Is this the first, is this the open, open plan consultants, this is, is it?
Yeah.
Right, is that... So the three days is the same price as six days? No, it's not, no, it's not. Unit price, I'm very confused.
Well, if, if you, on, on the first line, they, they, they did six items on the first one.
Is that a half day?
Four hundred and fifty pounds plus that.
A half day, that's nine hundred pounds a day, nine hundred pounds a day is that?
No, it's four hundred and fifty pounds a day.
Four hundred and fifty pounds times six, six days. The first line is six...
I thought you said they were half days?
No, they're not, they're days.
Sorry, they, they put the other, the other invoice is one and a half days.
Forget the other invoice, look, concentrate on this, line one says quantity six, that's six days, four hundred and fifty pounds per day.
We are, Adam, we're paying, sorry, chairman, we, we seem to be paying for some things which they haven't done. I can see that, because like the, the final submission thing, so there is, we are paying for some future work here. If you look at, just pick out necessary amendments to the plan following regulation fourteen consultation.
Which you've got there at the moment, which is two days.
So they will be, so that's work not done, but that's not a problem. But one of the concerns I have on here is that we paid for maps, and it was made very clear in the meeting that there was, there weren't any maps, or there were maps, not enough maps, but they weren't readable. So there are grounds to question this invoice, I think, you know, it is...
Well, there were maps, there'd be...
But they weren't, but they weren't enough.
In the reports that you received, if you were put on the scale of map that you wanted to be able to read, you'd need a piece of paper the size of this table probably. I believe that the, when they did the consultations and had all their boards up and all the rest of it, they've used the maps a lot, and they've come through from county council. Because they were actually using their copyright to be able to do that. So to do the map on a report, that is such a pixel level that you can read, that you've got the village of tea in there, is slightly unachievable. So I'm not entirely sure what the anxiety is over that, but the thing is, you wanted to see a breakdown of the invoice, and there's a breakdown of the invoice.
Yeah.
It's basically six, nine, eleven, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, looks like nineteen days, at four hundred and fifty pounds. You've got a breakdown of what they've done on those days, albeit quite high level preparation of consultation statement. I don't personally know what that means, but obviously.
I do have a query about the travelling expenses, if the steering group were travelling to them, why are we paying Open Plan such a high?
Because they've paid that before. This is not, don't be mind. At the end of the day, they've done, well, it looks like they've done one thousand five hundred and forty miles at forty p.m. hour, which comes out at six hundred and sixteen pounds. Now, what are these people based, Lincoln?
Christopher and Paul went in additional.
Hey, look, that's been paid, hasn't it?
That was paid out in cash, they have, as far as I'm aware.
That's not in this.
Christopher and Paul went to them in Lincoln, which we paid out in cash, which council approved.
So this is where these guys have come down and done journeys from Lincoln, or wherever they've come from, to visit Rutland. And they've been having their meetings at the King Centre? And they've been having a regular meeting, and so that's, you know, that's the, that appears to be, I'm not sure, eleven incurred plus three committed times in a ten mile round trip. So, what's, one hundred and ten mile round trip to Lincoln?
Is it?
How far do you think it is, councillor?
Well, I think in a whisper, you see, so I'm not.
You must say.
Can I just ask, on the travelling that Alison distributed, overall costs, is that seven hundred and something pounds including this amount?
Yes, I know what you mean.
Well, in the document that you said kindly sent to everybody, you said there was seven hundred and something pounds travelling expenses, I don't have it.
It's probably here, is this a sixty?
Does it include this? Because then that doesn't look so bad, because I think some people are having the impression that councillors might have spent seven hundred pounds travelling.
No, no, it is in the, it is, I checked it, yeah. The only, the only thing we, we've only paid, council has only paid the neighbour plan out, their members in the town, one trip.
Okay, councillor Clough, you might be quiet, but bear in mind that you people, you've now had about four goes at this. There is a limit, well, I'm going to say is enough, is enough. But I'm going to come back around one more time, no more from the right, councillor Clough.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we write to the steering group, not just the chairman, the steering group as a whole, and ask them if they are satisfied that Open Plan fulfilled their requirements as a professional body? And that should we pay this, accordingly, are they recommending that we pay this full bill?
I haven't got a problem with that, when that comes, if that's going to be a proposal at the minute, as long as you add in there that if they come back and say yes, the council will pay. Councillor.
I was just going to say, do we actually need the Open Plan Company so early? Could we not have produced the plan with our own resources and then presented it to a professional company?
Well, the thing is, it forces halfway down the paddock.
Well, it is now, but if such a project comes up in the future, I think we should.
Trust me, I'm not going to do the neighbour plan wrong.
Well, something goes like that, you know.
Given that we seem to be basing most of our, sort of conjecture on the report itself, could we not propose that we, with our payment until our document is updated, or, and we're happy with it? Because obviously, from what we all know.
We've never paid it, we've, according to you, love, I'm saying. But actually, I was actually leaning more towards councillor Clough here, that the work has been done, the thing is, the council commissioned these people to do the job. The council have also agreed previously to these budgets. And to a certain extent, we've sort of, we now have an invoice, and we have to have some very, very good reasons not to pay now. Councillor Clough actually raised something which I probably don't disagree with, that we will approve to pay it, subject to the steering group, steering group as a whole. Because naturally, it's not just Chris, you know, Chris Clark saying, yes, it has to be the whole steering group, because then some of them may have some reservations. So, anyone else want to add anything? Oh, councillor Romney.
I think, I think you're right, I mean, the staple door's been open some time, we should have queried this before, really. But it does strike me, some of this is work to be done.
Well, it's, well, it's, it's two days, but isn't it, on doing the, following regulation?
Well, preparation of maps, I raised this at the meeting, I mean, I don't think they've prepared any maps, they've just copied the legend on the back of the maps.
About the maps of it.
Was the Rutland County Council map.
Yeah, they are using Rutland County Council.
But there were no keys on them?
There was a key on the back. But it was not relevant to Open. Preparation of consult, consultation statements, three further committed load of travel expenses, go back to the maps, so and so. Make necessary amendments to plan following regulation fourteen. So what I'm saying is, do we want to be paying for work that's not yet done?
Right, I'm not going to invite you to speak again, but I've heard everybody about four or five times now. And councillor Clough made a, I think, proposal that the council approached the steering group as a whole to get their opinion, and subject to what they come back with, that the council will then pay the invoice.
When the work is done?
When it's, when it's, yeah.
When it's completed.
Yeah, but if you know that you've got the money, you can adjourn there, whatever. What's the amendment, councillor?
Well, I would agree exactly what councillor Clough said, but I'd like to put a little bit of amendment on it. That we think back to when we voted on the path through cuts close, whatever it was, and we decided that we should pay something, but not all of it, until everything was completely done and we'd sorted it all out. So I would suggest that we do that, we do, and we wait till it's absolutely done, but we could pay them a small, you know, interim, whatever it's called, payment now.
Interim.
Interim payment now.
Councillor Clough, I mean, what percentage would you base that on?
They've, they've, they've gone to date to be twenty-one thousand, so this is, they've already had, it's not as if they've not been paid anything.
Does anybody want, does anybody want to second that addition, that amendment?
I would like to.
Well, I'm going to deal with one item at a time, so I'm going to ask that question, does anybody want to second that amendment? Right, so that's, let's vote on that amendment. Who's in favour?
Oh, what, sorry, you said what, Joyce?
Right, so councillor Romney is seconded the amendment, all those in favour of that amendment, show of hands please. Three. Pay attention please, all those against that amendment? One, two, three, four, five, six. One abstention. So that falls, so, yeah, you've got an amendment?
No, I'd go with Joyce, but it's the wording. We're waiting for a response, but we don't want to agree to pay it tonight, because that means basically, they can say they don't like it, but then the clerk and her don't pay it. It's got to be, it's got to be, wait for their response to make a decision in the future.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Joyce to just say her actual proposal in. The councillor Romney.
The town council might to the steering group and ask all the members to confirm whether they think, what did I say? Whether they agree that the professional company met their financial obligation.
And expectation, I guess.
And expectation. Into production of the documents. And we would base the payment of the bill upon their response, providing the work has been finished.
Should it be?
Which is the spot. We should, we should make sure that the work has been finished.
So basically, right, just to agree, they think it's been done to the standard, you know, and that we pay the invoice on completion of the work that's detailed on this invoice. So that's, that was prepared by councillor Clough, seconded by councillor Wadsworth, all those in favour, show of hands please. One, two, three, four, five, five in favour. All those against that? Sorry, did, you, you didn't vote for it then?
No, I voted against it, because I'm a bit wary of the wording.
Three, three are against it, so that's abstentions. All abstentions, one, two. That's, so, carry.
So we put it in their court?
Yep.
If they, if they say to put it up, we pay it.
That's true, that's, that's close now, I'm stopping you there. Right, item eleven. Councillor Romney.
At the previous meeting, we were asked about money for grants for two organisations, and it was pointed out by councillor Lucas that this authority does not have a policy for grants, so the policy committee met and were invited with councillor Clough to join us on that particular occasion. And we went through policy, we looked at different authorities, and they all seemed to use a generic base, and then amended to their own needs, which is what we have done, we've looked at it, and this is the policy that we would like to move to council, that we should be basing any grant applications and payments on.
Brilliant, so brilliant, well done to whoever this group have drawn this up. Any comments or observations on the policy at the moment? Councillor Brooks?
I think it's quite much better than we had before, but we have an issue with what we've agreed this evening straight away, because the young lady sat there and said, it's just her doing the project, and the first condition, two A's, says you can't grant to individuals.
Well, we haven't accepted this grant, obviously.
That's why I'm saying is that you've got to look at this and.
In that situation, like, she's the only person doing the project, in a, the project is not done.
I know, but this is why we need to go through this carefully, because, because what we've done tonight, even though we don't have the policy, has contradicted the policy already.
No, we haven't got to it, we're contradictory, we haven't got to.
No, but it is actually based on law, isn't it? It's the local government act.
Right, so what it is then. Well, you can do, you have to put your hand up and ask, you might have to wait for councillor Brooks to sit down.
Sorry, sorry, I think it's finished.
Councillor Brooks is finished, how many, councillor?
Not quite, but I'm quite pleased to see it, and I would hope that people will follow up the requirements and things that are asked in it, for so much. That was one of the reasons the grants policy was being a few years ago, because we just gave money and there was no follow-up. So if we do adopt this policy, I hope it's good to it.
Councillor Skipper.
I just want, sorry.
Yes, who has?
Just one, I don't understand, you could explain to me, it's probably very simple, but I don't understand it. Private organisations operate as a non-profit business, don't understand.
If we can, do you want to have a private meeting, if we can bring you in a minute? Councillor Romney? Yes, let's see what councillor Ryan has to say, because he might add something to this.
Well, it comes under the local government act, so we shouldn't have one, really, because otherwise there's a danger we give money to a source that we shouldn't do. I totally support this, I'm used to this background, and we must stick by that. Whenever we get a request in the future, we look at this template. Also, there is a risk that groups don't give us the full background, you know, we need, you know, the financial aspect. It's so easy for them to come along, or just send a note out, so it will need a proper request, the financial background, so I totally support it.
Anybody get that? No, she's going to be silent. Oh, yeah, just on this, yes, yeah.
Private organisation.
Yeah, private organisation, so that could be something like and an organisation which is, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head.
Care.
Yeah, care, yeah, because they're a non-profit organisation, that they are a business. So it's a business, it operates solely as a sole trader, but what they do, they do somewhere, they make no profit, or they can do it for the community, it's like a community volunteer project.
Isn't that good?
But it is good. That's what we're saying, we're starting, we want. And the other thing, to pick up on Peter's point. We did say that item four is an application procedure, so there is, you know, there is, we have said that we do want a strict procedure into the way that applications come forward, so we can look at what's, what they're being asked for the correct way, so we know what we're giving the money for, where it's going. And we're also asking for feedback. Law organization will receive a notice of the. Councillor. Yes. I was looking on this item here, and eleven, two and three are actually considered to consider a request for a grant. It needs meeting requirements of this policy. One does, two doesn't, one, one does. Well, that's fine, okay, I can give that. Yeah, but, sorry, a successful grant application, item seven, the organizations are required to apply, they use as members at the grant to receive. And acknowledgement of the town council's support should be made in a publicity. So we're making sure that we're getting the prompt QDOS, and we have the ability to actually clawback any funded, any money that is not used. So if we give the grant for fifty quid, nearly spent on a viable, another one. Right, so councillor Brooks, you've spoken on this one, so I'm not going to back you. Right, okay, before we do, I haven't spoken. So, to clarify then, the Red Box project, for instance, we spoke about earlier on, if they wanted more money again next year, they would come to the grant procedure. To clarify, a point that was made by councillor Brooks earlier on, in fact, they are not sole trading, they are a national organisation, it's a national charity. So your proposal is then, councillor Brooks?
That we accept this, but we, you raised the issue tonight about the two grant application requests, I don't actually have them. And I don't think we should be considering those tonight.
Well, let's take it one at a time, we don't have to be eleven, nine, aren't we?
The citizens advice one doesn't fall within.
We're doing the eleven one, chairman.
Yes, we are doing the eleven one.
Okay, but.
Let's, let's break up somebody eleven one, don't worry.
I just, I don't understand again, citizens advice doesn't fall within this, it falls within another.
We're not discussing that, we're discussing eleven one.
Okay, well then I propose that we accept this.
The policy.
The policy.
I would like to add amendment to that.
Amendment, yeah, shoot.
I would like to propose that we accept the policy, but that we go back into it and, and I gather, we've done this for grant policy for this year to deal with the grant applications we've had. We'd like to make this into a permanent grant policy, and we would like to, we'd like to propose that the working group will rewrite the application form and the information that we give to bodies applying for grants, so that it's all in keeping and up to date.
Yeah, I think what councillor Clough, I think what councillor Lee did, I think, because we, when we looked at this, we were only, we were only asked to look at the policy. Not to look at the spend, not, we weren't looking at a full scheme of the grants. I think what councillor Clough is proposing is that the council has a proper grant policy open to all organizations, which obviously wouldn't come in until next year because of the grant money. Are you happy to have that as an amendment to your proposal, that we accept the grant policy, but it is as councillor Clough said, that it's made a permanent grant policy, that it's. And that was given warrants and.
I think this one is a permanent policy, but I would accept the amendment to review the working group, to review the application process.
Which we should be doing.
And the information.
But this is a start.
Well, so we've got that captured, haven't we, so we'll, yeah, that's right, yeah, so we'll accept that there, so we'll take you as the second then, for that as a.
Yes.
So proposed by councillor Brooks, all of that, including that slight amendment, seconded by councillor Clough. All those in favour, now, show of hands please. That's unanimous, then. So eleven, two, so we have got two requests for grants, these have come to the council before and would be third. So you have to have eyeballs on these, so that's why the paper's not been rewritten, so we're going to. Shall we take each one in? Yeah, so we'll look at eleven, two, which is to consider a question, citizens advice for a grant of two thousand pounds.
That can be paid under number power, so that would count.
Yeah, so we have a pound per basically, okay. Any comments or anything?
No, seconded. Has it been proposed, sorry?
So are you agreeing with this councillor, so do you want to make a comment?
No, that's fine.
All right, okay, so proposed by councillor Box, accepted by councillor Clough. All those in favour, show of hands.
Use of that is providing a service.
Are you in for this or are you out of it?
I'm voting against it because they've never shown in the past what they've done with our money.
Right, okay, so we've got, so that's right, good matter, good matter, you can do that. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, six on this side, seven, eight, nine in favour, one against. Yes, brilliant, okay, right. Eleven, three is to consider a request for an Open Town Council partnership for two thousand five hundred pounds. Do you also propose that? Comments, observations for what?
It doesn't come within the reading of the grant policy.
Doesn't come within the reading of the grant policy, councillor Brooks?
I would agree with that because it's asking for running costs.
Right.
And it just doesn't, it doesn't fall within our grant and it's a company as well, not a charity.
So, um, what's there, anybody want to propose, no, we can't, you can't do a naked proposal, so nobody wants to propose that we pay it, do we?
So can I propose that we don't pay it?
Well, why don't we do this a little bit more professionally and probably propose that we advise Open Town Partnership that we can't accept this request because it's not forward in our grant policy. That would be a more professional, like...
And then if we can highlight the parts of the policy so they can...
Certainly. Well, they can have a copy. So are you happy to accept that as your proposal, that we advise them, that's accepted by councillor Clough again, yeah? All those in favour of that approach? Should we have a... There you go. How nice. Um, item forty is...
I do.
Do you?
The back seat is floating.
Do you need a slight pause?
Do you have mine?
I'm just going to suspend the meeting for five minutes so that I think we can refresh ourselves.
Sorry. I'm not sorry.
And I think Alison Cheltenham speaks.
Have we got a new response back from hybrid without the... You go away at the end of the week?
Only for three days.
Yeah, can you say to Sarah that we were hoping to have a meeting at the beginning of next week, I understood we were going to get it this week. So could you say to Sarah if the information comes through, can she let me know straight away? Because Sally Anne's got half term, so we need to pick up.
I have a good time for Alexi.
Nothing like, I'm just saying.
How is that Friday? So if she gets it, then do I have it?
As soon as possible, yes, please.
I don't have time to go through all this, but we're here to serve, but we did not need that. This is based on... Yeah.
Right.
Because they haven't... And maybe, but we regret...
No, twelve, twelve, we're up to twelve.
No, twelve. We agree that.
Oh, do you want me to go right? Right, thirteen. Get very confused. Is something going to... Can you come and visit me at hospital?
Yes, when?
Have the information available tomorrow.
Really, which hospital is it? Ooh, really?
Yes.
Can't get a product?
Unless the NHS send me.
How long have you been hospital?
At least one night, not two.
Oh, all right.
Thank you very much indeed, we're going to your driveway when I go past next time.
So when do you go in then?
Next Thursday at lunchtime.
What, you have a...
A lump from the...
From, from here?
Yeah.
From there, Tom.
It'll be nine. A year ago. You're lying, are you?
No, that's one done.
Oh, have you? How long were you in?
Five days.
You're lying.
Peter's got bigger lumps in him.
I had all my lumps.
I don't know if it came into what conversation we're coming up on.
I'm choosing to work.
Right, so the meeting is now resumed. Um, right, item thirteen is a strategic plan, basically this is, this is something which for some reason I did. What it is, after meetings with the Brundan County Council Chief Exec and Leader this year, we was talking about things and where Open Town Council was going and one of the things that came up, I sort of said, I've got this idea that I think Open Town Council should probably look at a strategic plan or it can be loosely incorporated as a mission statement. It's like who we are, what we're doing and what we want to achieve and it's a very fluffy sort of document, if you like, in many regards. It was pointed out that various chairmen in the past have sort of said, oh yeah, we need to do that because a lot of councils have them and it's never got off the ground, so I took it upon myself to go out and produce this very high level document because I didn't feel I should go too detailed because this is a basically a high level document which if the council choose to adopt a strategic plan, then I would recommend that the council then maybe have their own, either the policies and procedures working group or the council set a group that reviews it in more detail to say, yeah, we like that bit of it or this could be better and tweak it where we want. So this is a, if you like, what we refer to as a straw map, all right? So I'll bounce it around to go around the table and we'll go from over here with councillor Clough first.
Um, I think it's brilliant initiative, it's something we do need.
Minute that.
And you've picked a good origin to work off because it's quite a good format. We did have a non-adopted set of strategies.
Various people come with various...
Which is, this is what I was given when I joined.
Yeah.
Just room in here to fit some of these back in and I would like to say exactly what you said. I think, I think if this could go to the policies, you know, if all the councillors could feed some comments back in within a certain timeframe and the policies committee could get to work on it and add a little bit of tailoring and then we brought it back as a second draft, what you always brought back as a second draft.
The theory is we adopted a strategic plan, but now we've finished it.
Yeah, well, yes, it does, it does, you know, I think it would be good to discuss it round the table. It's an important document to rush through in a hurry where we really, but it's a really good thing to have.
Um, no, it was councillor Ryan who had this under next, so councillor Ryan.
Well, she's following my thunder a little bit, but I think...
Quick night.
Minute that as well. It gives the council a good structure and I've always thought we should have a meeting in term plan. We've got quite a lot of reserves, potentially we've got a lot of silver money will come our way if the building's set place. Um, so, you know, we need to think, you know, where we're aiming, what we want to achieve. And it mentions the general power of competence, we want to try and maintain that. And it also says the symmetry, whether we should have that in or not, I don't know.
I may have forgotten that, I may have made a wise move on that there.
Well, absolutely, I mean, it's a, we can see it's a big loss-making situation, but, you know, if we're doing it. But, yeah, to summarise, you know, I support what's been said and, you know, let's build on it. And again, future councils have got something to latch on to.
Absolutely, we need to leave this council in its best possible position, councillor Clough?
Um, yeah, I'm quite happy with this and I'd actually say it's even better than the neighbourhood plan.
Absolutely.
Can you do me a cheque for long hasn't?
Yeah.
You've got a still cheque.
But it is frustrating because not everyone knows me around the table from the early days of the council, but the first time I asked for a strategic plan for this council to put it on track was when Mr Dewis was up there and he said, no, we don't need one and rather sarcastically told me in the meeting if I felt I needed one, then go and write it yourself. Um, so this is good, might be a bit late in the day, but I think it's a good move. Things are improving very slowly. Um, but there is one little point on here, we talk of leadership, that may have come from the other council because we don't have a leader, we don't lead, we represent, so I think the wording could be changed from...
You're getting our feeling to put that to the...
Yeah, that's fine, exactly through the thing what Joy is maybe going to propose. Now, the other point, two point two, general power of competence, now some of you probably saw the email which came from the clerk and myself, my question. Um, we adopted that under the time when Al Dewis was also chairman, we did not have quality council. I know it's changed now, but we had something we adopted, which actually according to the now website today is a benefit of having quality or council or the new, I can't remember what it was, the initials, which the clerk sent me if I don't have the computer here to look it up, but it does concern me that we've adopted something which we've never used. It frustrates me that we never used it because we could be doing so much more for the town, but I think we should be careful moving forward that we claim that we can use it when we don't have what is required of the council. And that's all I'd say and I'd be very happy to support if Joy makes a proposal.
So, 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 so you can put it off, make a proposal then, Joy.
What type of hydro where this, we proposed that we adopted, we adopted a principle with personalisation by the council?
By the, yeah, by the, yeah, policies working group, yeah?
We can send comments to the...
Send them, send them to the second...
By the clerk.
Yep, so we've got that, adopting principle and then there is whatever, updated.
And can we, and can we request councillors' comments within the next, what timeframe should we give?
Well, as soon as the ring will roll, we'll say, won't we?
You'll have it, go ahead with the policy twenty one.
Well, I think...
As soon as the ring will, we'll say.
I think some of these strategic policies that are on that list don't fit in at all, this will be much...
So some of this, some of these needs to be added to it.
Sorry, with that, if we are going to do this, to save what happened with the neighbourhood plan, are we going to be, is this going to be a restricted document until it's approved or?
Yeah.
Just to make sure. I think it could be, I mean, it's so high level, but it's, there's nothing in here that's... But we've already done so anyway, it says that.
Well, we're not too, when we say that the policies working group will work on the policy, we'll have councillors' comments and produce a draft plan for us, for full access, like access to local council.
Yeah, and to agree to do that by the next meeting in...
Twenty nine, we're going to town. Oh, isn't it February two week?
Well, it's the next four, next four weeks.
I thought we were doing a meeting, sorry, a day of meeting, the other one.
No, 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 a bit of planning. A bit of full council, so with what Joy said there, but the council has put their comments in and then it's reviewed and then brought back, because if we're agreed to bring it back now, then we sort of supersede the six month board as well because we're just going to... So it's brought back for sign-off on the March full council meeting.
Thirty.
Whatever date it is.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Soon as we got comments for that meeting.
Okay.
So that's proposal against councillor Clough, seconded by, or what she's to do. Peter, sorry, councillor Ryan, all those in favour, heavens, you know. Um, I was probably suggesting you probably hang on to the original bit, so you might want to then compare how it goes. Now, what's on this, it's got a hated flop, isn't it? We've only got, we've only got about thirty five minutes.
We finished at half six then? We finished at half six?
No, we started at half six, didn't we? Half seven, halfway, we're only going for two hours, then we have to extend. So, just making you aware of that, we need thirty five minutes in the morning there. Um, right, item fourteen is insurance provision from first of April twenty nineteen, the clerk just wants to make it quiet, unless...
I've spoken to insurers, I've told them that council, we're going to put that with the additional chain, mayor's chain and also I've spoken, there is the, there's been a slight change of an amount for Christmas lights, but we do have to insure them and after speaking to the Christmas decorators, it's up to seventeen thousand, which is a reduction. I've spoken to the insurance company, so with the two amendments, the amount is the same, the quote is the same. So really then it's a case of whether you decide to go for a three year or a five year and obviously if you go for five year, it's slightly cheaper.
You have to five year period.
So that's per year, five years, yeah, so for five years, that is the price per year. There is a slight difference that it goes up, I can't remember, like not the RPR, it's the index link or something, which is, yeah, but other than that, that is what the...
Okay, so we've got these council, what's your councillor, I think?
Yes, well, if we're allowed to do a long term arrangement, it makes financial sense because it's going to save us five hundred a year, ten and a half thousand pounds. And that upping and we always use Europe, I think most authorities use them, they, the noted insurance company, they give a good service, I would support it, okay?
Any other, well, I'm going through the commentary, it's go to councillor Brooks.
Does it include, I can't see a public liability because I'm concerned about the cost because I've worked in all organisations where just the public liability insurance has cost ten thousand pounds.
I think that's a yes.
And I don't know whether it's enough. Do you know what the cover is?
Not off the top of my, not off the top of my head, but I can find out, it might be on the wall.
Don't worry about it.
I don't give a pound if she's writing on the walls.
Well, it's a certificate, it's a certificate, it has to be on the wall.
Oh, it's up until April this year, the same policy obviously, so that's the new cover, less than five million, so, no, it doesn't say what it is.
No, it wouldn't go there.
No, but there's the certificate of it.
So you do get, so that's fine.
I need to find out.
Five million per...
Probably liability, yeah.
I don't have an issue.
Right, okay, so proposed by, is this for the five years?
Five, five.
That's five, four, five, six, fifty per year. Seconded by councillor Skipper, all those in favour, hands.
Anthony, you've heard it from him.
That's unanimous, yeah? Uh, item fifteen is correspondence received, this is to... Make any decisions, any comments, observations on this, this is a, I think it's a bit, councillor...
Before we do this one, can we do the only part of the portfolio of views?
So I say that again?
Portfolio of views services. That was, that was a response, you sent a C now.
Right.
Certainly agenda.
Well, it's, well, it's, the agenda item is, is, um, I think it's received, isn't it? It's, um, the report's received or that was received.
Friday, it was a tenant.
Yeah, the only correspondent on the agenda, is this one, or not, I don't know what.
Well, we, I brought up the subject of Jules because of the...
That's right, I had a reply from councillor Foster.
Foster.
Foster, I say, yeah.
Um, and I just thought we should reply to it.
Right, okay, um...
Can I, can I, can I read a suggested response?
No, no, because it's not, unfortunately his correspondent isn't on the agenda, so we can't, we can put it on next meeting.
It's a bit late then.
Yeah. Let me think about that, I mean, all the councillor Ryan, that's me.
I think it was circulated to all of us by...
I'm just wondering, we might be able to flex this. Um, in actual fact, all right, yeah, let's, to consider the correspondence of the Lawless Act relation to the establishment of youth volunteering projects here and we have done this thing with youth services, yes. I'm going to, I'm happy to go out on a limb here and sort of say...
What I would have said to councillor Foster is that the Open Town Council would like to thank you for this detailed reply, that the planning application wording of office space was less than a clear picture of intentions, that as was reported to the town councils at the meeting on thirty the January, the quality of the excellent joint care, social care for young people in Brundan was not in question. We understand however that only one evening youth club session by thirty to seven thirty is currently available to the young people of Oakham and the question raised was whether RCC was adequately honouring its moral obligations to the trustees of Jules Docking Centre. And the Open Town Council is concerned that evening provision for young people in Oakham, is concerned about evening provision for the young people in Oakham. Because that was what, what came out of the discussion of the planning.
Yes, there was a deep, yeah, right, okay, so there's, there's a suggestion that from an additional to the correspondence received, just touching on the Jules thing, councillor Clough has prepared reply on an email received from councillor Foster, councillor Brooks, you're going to answer me, yeah?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure what we want to do this evening, but I've, obviously we're being asked to, if we would like to be part of this project.
That one then, the Lawless Act one, yeah.
So I think possibly, you know, the... So I, I think possibly, you know, this is a good opportunity for the council to get, to get involved with. And it could be a good thing that obviously, I know it's a volunteering, but it could be something that the council could grant towards if they did need funding. And going to, if we are talking about that, Joyce, I, I was most disappointed by the county council's response. Because it's important, the youth club thing, because that was the purpose of the original request, I think is the point. And it seems that it's becoming an, an office for services, but nothing actually practical in the sense of a youth club. So, but I'm not even sure that this, it's, I'm not, I'm getting a bit confused there because I don't see how these link together.
But no, it's because it's what it is, we've got two pieces, not one piece of correspondence. Right, okay, let's talk.
It's a youth subject, but I, I think this is a good thing to support.
I'd maybe answer, Catterbrook.
Right, I would think that that letter is very good. And I'm concerned that this youth club is five thirty to seven thirty, what age group is that?
It's the younger ones.
This is, this is what I've been saying since I've been on this council, that it's disgraceful, there's nothing for the real teenagers, the older teenagers in this town. No wonder the drugs are getting taken on more and more and more, because there's nothing to, to entertain them, to do something. It's no good sending to Greenfield, that's what, not what modern youth want. And it's an absolute shame, so I would support Joy's letter and propose that we accept it.
Okay, well, uh, well, is anybody else going to think same, right, unravel this. So councillor Clough has put together a reply on behalf of the council, to councillor Foster's email, that's proposed by councillor Clough. I don't think anybody wants to amend it, councillor Skipworth wants to second that. Shall we vote on that before we go? Or the show of hands, all in support of that?
Sorry, who?
Proposed by councillor Clough, seconded by councillor Skipworth, so, well, that's.
Just wanted to make the point that we were aware of what was good, but that we did have a question.
Yeah, nine, nine in favour. And then the, the other piece of correspondence then is picking up on what councillor Brooks said. In regard to the youth letter from the Dr Finesse, um, if the council are reminded that they want to be involved in the pilot, maybe we should, um, I would suggest that we ask that the clerk, uh, register that Cat Harrow's interest using this email. Uh, because at the moment we know nothing more than that. So, so everyone's read the letter, so on the back, what councillor Brooks said, I would propose on the chair that we get the clerk to respond and say Oakham Town Council would be interested to hear more of what we looked, yeah? So seconding point, councillor Neil, all those in favour, show of hands, absolutely unanimous. Eleven, two, I know.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Task and Finish Group, receiving note of report. So everybody's received and read the report diligently, well, we had, we had the report sent around on email, didn't we? And we had our copies. Mine's in my folder, you know, it happens, anybody, so, um, well, basically, we, we're not sort of voting on it because it's, it's definitely here to, to, to note it, so. I'd like to thank the, was it Task and Finish Group that put this together, wasn't it? And, and I, yeah, it took a while getting to the council, but it is now in our domain. I would encourage people to read it all at once. And it's still work in progress going on with this finish group, task and finish group, isn't it? There's another.
I've got a report to move on that.
Right, okay, so if there's no further comments on that, I would just ask the council note of report, yeah?
I've got a report for this as well.
What now?
Yes, I was waiting for the appropriate, she.
All right, we're going to have a, come back to that, we've got a review.
Once again, just giving a bit of my phone, because the answer is a blah blah. The task and finish group accepted by our county council, has now finished its task and completed for each two reports. One, an evidence based report about Oakham itself. Two, a recommendation report which highlights many strategies for the regeneration of Oakham. In December of last year, R C C full council endorsed both reports and stated they will actively support the plan. Now that the task and finish group has defunct after achieving its goals, a new body is required to carry the project to the next stage. This will be picked up and continued by Shadow Ward, so I can't tell. Um, the prize of Shadow Ward is, is like an interim board until the next sort of board gets established. Okay, comprising appendages of the task and finish group with participation of leader of, um, R C C. Nor to write constitution for the successor body titled the Open Regeneration Partnership. Okay, um, talk going on about the future High Street Fund incorporated into this. Currently, central government is supporting initiatives with the aim of improving the high streets via the Future High Street Fund. At this spot worth approximately six hundred and twenty five million, requires two stage process which we are currently investigating. Now, R C C and the Shadow Ward are preparing an initial expression of interest which has to be submitted by the twenty second of, um, March this year. Um, I have three proposals to make if that's possible at this juncture. One of them, the first one, do you want to do them individually?
Yeah, individually, please, yeah.
First one is that we as a town council accept and endorse the task and finish group's reports that we've already seen and read on several reports.
So that's the first one, do you want to second that? Seconded by councillor Buxton, this is, is going to be on an email as well, go through to the class.
Yes, it is.
So you've been able to capture those bits, so this is first proposals in that email, so that's proposed by councillor Buxton, seconded by councillor Buxton, all those in favour, show of hands, uh, actually, one, you can vote on this as well, councillor Bonning. One, two, three, four, five in favour, all those against, one, and all those abstaining, show of hands, three. Is that ten? So that's.
Nine, nine of what?
Five, oh, oh, no, one, uh, two, three, four, five. So who was against it again? Who was against?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
So, oh, sorry, two against, Martin, Martin. So three against.
So two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
Right, cool, what's your second proposal, please?
Second proposal, can I just raise a point of order? Um, when I've tried to raise, um, proposals, I've been told I can't because it's not on the agenda. So I, I, I don't want to scuff up if it was work, but, but I just feel that we are required to put things properly on the agenda and have reports.
Okay, so the classroom answer that.
Because I've just been refused when I thought.
It's, um, under item eight, the working groups, and it's got any on the ninth members, well, the task and finish group is a working group.
But we're not doing item eight, we're doing item sixteen.
But it will fall under that of the agenda.
So I'm not sure whether it's going to be on eight or sixteen, so.
So it's still a working group.
Well, we doubt we.
Okay, all right, well, it, it says on there, to receive a note report from the task and finish working group on sixteen, so what's your second one?
Second one is that we as a town council agree to be represented and actively engaged with the Oakham Regeneration Partnership, a policy section.
Okay, anybody want to second that? Councillor Wadsworth, show of hands, all in favour? One, two, three, four, five, um, against, abstentions is going to be five then. Oh, that means there's a, oh, that's, that's.
You've got all of your hands there.
With all, with all due respect, Jim, it's not, it's not. No, it's not, no, it's, 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 it's. Councillor Clough is, is not voting, so she's not abstaining, she's not voting at all. Well, anyway, it's not going to vote now, it's just going to carry anyway, it's fine, that goes, it's carried anyway. Diffish has, has an interest because she, she represents.
Yeah, she's not fair.
Well, she, she can't knock it, she has to abstain.
She has to abstain.
Oh, does she?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Not with them.
Yeah, can't vote in favour or against, so she's abstaining, so, but, no, so that's carried because it's got five. Oh, all right, cool, panic cry over there, yeah, don't matter, because five said yes, if somebody, if five had said no, then, then.
They're not saying no, they're abstaining.
No, abstaining, it's five that's carried. Number three.
We go, right, the ways of town council buys a letter of endorsement for Rockham County Council's application to the Future High Street Fund.
Which is already being. Say that again, slowly, because that, that was a little.
No, we as a town, sorry, that we as a town council buys a letter of endorsement to Rockham County Council's application or for the county council's application to the Future High Street Fund. They're going to write, they're going to write the.
Can I, can I afford clarification on that, Chair? For, for, for me very further, because are you saying, you're, you're, are you tying us in to fund it? That's, because that's, that's how I read it, that you are tying us in, you're saying that we agree with them and, and we, we will, we will agree with them with funding. That's, that's how that's worthy, that's how, that's how it came across, you're tying us into funding.
Uh, right, going back to that, what it says here is that we write a letter of endorsement for their application. If you think about it the same way as you, you're just writing a, saying you support as well, because it's like, um, thinking of this local approval.
Yeah, you're supporting them, yeah, you're, for your supporting them.
I can see how it's worthy.
Yeah. Councillor Ryan.
Yes, well, I think that's answered the question, but I was going to make the point. I think without our endorsement, it would, could run into rough water, and I think we should, should be supporting it.
But I, I would like to know a bit more, like in a report, where, so where, where's the funding, who, who? No, I don't want to, I don't want to endorse anything, well, I don't even know who or what we're endorsing.
Right, councillor Clough.
Sorry.
The government has put six hundred and seventy five pounds, millions of pounds in a fund called the Future High Street Fund, which town, high streets are encouraged to bid for. It's, um, it will be, it will be oversubscribed by four times, I believe. Um, it's a slim chance that we might win through, but.
We should have this down in the report, so we know what we're endorsing.
But, but at the moment, we're not bidding for projects, we, we are putting an expression of interest in, we are writing to say we are availing the high street, we have this evidence to show we are availing the high street, we have this aspiration for our town, will you support us? And, and the one thing that will count very strongly in our favour is the fact that we have a lot of community support and support of the town council, as well as other elements, we'll, we'll count.
Right, I, I already, what, what was being proposed there, that the council support, the county council in their application?
Yes.
That's pretty much it, so I can't skip with it.
Yeah, I, I just think there's too many, it's, it's not clear, because support is everything, it can be money, it can be just supporting. And also, I'm concerned, because I am very worried that this is a back doorway, sorry, I shouldn't be looking at you, a back door into the one way system again. Because, no, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, because I can't see that we can do much with the present situation. We can't put trees in the high street because then there'll be leaves dropping down and that will be dangerous. There are just too many worrying things about this, are you listening to me?
I am listening to you, yes.
So I am not happy about this because it's not explicit enough, and I think if we give them an inch, that will be the one way system again.
Right, so, so basically there's a proposal that the town council.
It's on, it's on the record.
That the council basically write to R C C and, and sort of, but we're saying that we offer endorsement.
Yes, endorsement.
Yeah, we like the idea of this.
But we're not, we need to be clear that we're not paying anyone.
We're endorsing their application.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, just as we were this morning, we were all saying, yeah, we, we agree, you're going to make an application for money, we're not committed to it.
We need some support from the community, that's really what it.
Well, that was, so we, I think we're reasonably happy with the proposal, which councillor Bond has made, who wants to second that then? Councillor Ryan, all those in favour, a show of hands, one, two, three, four, five in favour, all those against, a show of hands. One, two, three, and abstentions, obviously, two, so that's carried on.
Chairman, can I just add just one point?
Sorry, I wanted me to exchange fifteen minutes.
Yes, okay, I'll just say what Catterbrook's.
Can I just quickly add a comment, that when we, I mean, I, it seems like I'm nitpicking as I get views popping up, but this is quite a serious issue, and I'm not against what the task and finish group report says or what it's done. But when things come to council, it is very clear in our standing orders that there should be reports on all proposals, and we haven't had that, it's just come from a, a note. And that is why I, I want to make it clear that I'm not against what's happened in the sense out there, but I'm against what's happened here tonight, that we haven't had the proper reports to know what we're actually to endorse.
Right, okay, um, that's been, that's been, the only thing is we need, this is something which the office is going to have to really clarify, because, I mean, I know that, I know that.
Yeah, so I wonder what Ashley's going to do there.
Otherwise I could sit here and say, can I make a proposal, Chairman, that we buy new benches, that's why we don't do it that way.
Right, um, right, your, your office has been loaded. Right, it's, it's now, um, we're not going to finish this meeting by a half past, so, so we're going to, we need to propose to extend the meeting by a maximum of thirty minutes, so that will take us up to nine o'clock. So proposed by the chairman, seconded by councillor Wadsworth, all those in favour, show of hands, that's nine, and against? Abstentions. That's carried.
We don't need to get on with it.
Quite a minute.
Right, so we're going on seventeen, planning application, this is the three grounds, changing view from a public castle premises to a single dwelling on forty North Gate.
Puffy village.
Oh, is it puffy village? No, they have, they done it for, they were going to do it for apartments, which council agreed.
Oh, now they're going for a single dwelling?
Now they're going for a single one.
All right, okay, any comments or observations? Councillor Brooks?
I, I think it's always very, it's planning, as I can say, isn't it? Um, I think it's very sad when we lose a pub, but, um, but it's happened before. You have what I believe it was called the ship on Ashwell Road, which is now an accommodation, I think for Oakham School.
The old house.
Sorry, no, the ship and the old house, of course, yes, um, but it's better than having a boarded up derelict pub, so, and it can always be turned back if the tide changes.
Well, they can always drink drinks, aren't they? Right, so.
So I have no objection.
Without the proposal, isn't it?
Yeah, I would propose.
They are the puffy village, the steamy village.
So because the council had already agreed that it was going to be turned into flats, we've got no objection to it being turned into a single dwelling, so the council proposed by councillor Brooks, it's, uh, unconsisted. Seconded by councillor Wadsworth, all those in favour, hands, unanimous. Um, seventeen two is, uh, Miss Swink's Co, a single story side rear extension on fifty two, fifty two Actual Road.
Ooh, that's big, that red thing.
That's a lot.
You're not a liar, are you?
Oh, darn it, oh no.
Oh, how embarrassing.
How do you learn, how do you learn minutes?
Yeah, that was, that was ten minutes ago, why did you turn it off?
That was before you clicked.
Charge it, I've been waiting, charging it up all week.
I've got to charge it.
But it didn't work.
Switch forgets.
Did we try turning it off now again?
Did you send it off?
It's pretty. Yeah, definitely.
We need to get new batteries for that thing.
Do it.
Charging a week.
Call me to just plug it in. While we do every week.
All things good.
Yeah, no, it's worked. Just a shame we was left to switch on on the light, aren't we? If we'd only known, it was going to take two hours to get to this point, I guess.
Good information, you all have kept computer batteries, they can't come in close, you have to use all this procedure, council's having this power.
If we, uh, and the light, I don't know what we're actually doing, we need to up to the, um, fifty cent, if we can get any big battery on it, can't we?
We've still got some time there.
Don't do, oh yeah, that's.
It was risky.
Disgusting.
Should we just, should we talk about trees while we?
Oh, you've got four seconds, four seconds, ooh.
I mean, never get an update, it's wonderful that we've, uh.
Fifty three million all hands. You've got a report on the tree, by the way, we'll get to that, Mr Bottom.
Rest in peace, Father.
Did you just give it in?
Joy, Joy, it's. While, while we're just waiting, just a quick one, I'm, I'm like you said, I think it is important that if you're going to give a report, that it's in, it's in time to be out with the agenda back, if it's related to something as important as that. Because we, we sat and did five, five policy reports in the meeting and we missed it by a few days, now we're going to have to do it next month. Yeah, so. Oh, she's still got the task.
It's going to.
Sir. Oh, no pressure, sir, sir, she's still red, sir.
It is, it works, it's very tempting, yeah.
Yeah, listen, while we're waiting on that one, we'll just skip through seventeen three, which is the Sycamore Tree. Um, no, apparently this, this, the tree warden has been out, and she rang through. Um, she recommended a pre- on it.
All of them, every bit of them?
Was, was this the house that wanted to chop the trees down in Capless Park Road, and we, we asked for more information?
No, that's like holding trees.
But this is several trees, it's, it's to, it's to-
There's bits of trees, is the tree warden's happy, I propose to accept it.
Yes, there's no fennel.
I can't believe this, this, the fennel, the fennel is ridiculous. Crown raised, it really makes sense, how can you raise a tree?
Joyce is very good.
Oh, no.
Joyce is very good on this thing.
Crown raised a tree, makes sense.
I second Joyce's piece.
Pull away from the house.
They moved the trees. I think you stole it for time.
So that's it, it's a news.
Who's proposing tree? Seconded by councillor Wadsworth, all those show of hands, all in favour? Right, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favour, against? Abstentions?
One. Have we sent you to be assistant pre-warden?
Daniel.
Yeah, yeah, got it. I think, I think, did I send you on a course?
You're gonna be promoted in, mate.
You, you can, you can go, you can go, there's Irish gentlemen. You're the two, you're the two fellow, three of them.
Good guy.
Three of them. So is any, so is any fifty two Actual Road, everyone have to send the copy around the table? Because the, the-
Another person?
No, we've been, two first.
The old school, the old hospital.
The what?
The old hospital.
The work catch.
Capless, Capless Hospital. No. Um, you know the fish and chip shop, is it Ashwell Road?
Yes.
It's on that side, but it's a bit further down, that's where the school is, you know they've got that half-circle thing where they ride in and out?
Before Ben Johnson's-
And then of the next bit.
Up to Queen's Road and before Chester.
This is a tourist house, part of the thing, isn't it?
It looks very nice.
That's when you, when you pass all the nice property.
No, it looks nice.
They are nice, it's a very nice area.
So, we've got one of them.
So, so we've got this, um, single-storey side rear extension on fifty Actual Road.
There were, there were no complaints, there were no letters from anyone.
Last session.
Councillor Wadsworth.
Councillor Clough. All right, so not any more. I've got, got, both of them by councillor Skipworth, I've got seconded by-
Councillor Wadsworth.
Councillor Wadsworth, all those in favour, show of hands. Uh, well, must be, you know, there was some, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so there's, uh, no grounds to reject anything. So is that all the planning?
No.
First one, rear extension. Mister Jordan, first one, rear extension.
Mrs Jordan.
Alterations to vehicle access onto public highway, four hundred and fifty.
And, and first, first all rear extension.
Well, it's at the rear, it's at the rear, yeah, it's got a big door head on there.
It's quite, it's quite a big massive house.
Opposite side to the difference.
Okay, so any correspondence, it's always a line down between those, isn't it?
There's quite a, quite a big gap between that and the house on Verney.
Huge, yes.
Actually, rest of the garden's on the Verney, it's actually, remember from the drawing.
And it doesn't overlook anything, certainly. Are there any objections?
No, no objections.
No objections.
And it's already a shalley garden, but they're just pushing the wall up and making it a bit bigger, and making the job a bit bigger on the front.
That'd be access, probably, all right.
They're lowering the curb and moving it up a little bit.
It's not here, it's probably somewhere.
It's expensive to do that.
So, um, as, as everyone else is looking at the plans, proposed by councillor Romney to, no objection, seconded by councillor Arling, all those in favour, show of hands. You know us.
Right, sorry about that, folks.
All right. I mean, we've just, it's a voice-
We're just gonna go in now, remember to not be involved.
No, that's okay.
Right, so the, uh, item nineteen is to decide whether, decide whether, decide whether, if no other time expects the meeting of the full council and the revolution planning, why has this come up?
Because we, if you remember, they changed the time, it's only changed a few months, so it runs out this month.
Okay.
I'm confused about this.
Well, we keep it at six thirty?
Yes.
Seconded.
Whoa, a bit quick there. And then, what about the town meeting, is that?
No, that's, that's flexible.
Okay, any college observations on this? No, so you've got proposed by councillor Skipworth, seconded by councillor Neil, wasn't it? Show of hands, all in favour?